Just want to verify that you can hear us online?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you. Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. I'd like to go into the notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open for the public. And we would do that for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney for legal advice on any item listed on today's agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. At this time, we'll do roll call.
Carol Mandino.
Present.
Joshua Maher.
Present.
Christine Sheehy.
Present.
CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton.
Present.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Megan Weller.
Present.
Thank you.
Public comment. At any time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any public comment? Thank you.
Yes, well, good afternoon, Planning and Zoning Commission members. My name is Joanne Keen, and I'm a deputy city manager for the city. I first want to say thank you to all of you for your service. It's a big job, and we appreciate what you do for the city, so thank you. I wanted to provide an opportunity to give you an update on our community development division. I'm going to be giving an update to City Council during the budget retreat tomorrow, and I wanted to also come to Planning and Zoning Commission and give you an update just on the Community Development Division and plans for recruitment for filling Dan Folk's position. I did want to start by saying, with Dan's departure, the city manager's office, we had a discussion and really looked at this as an opportunity to make some changes in the organization. And one of the things that we will be doing is renaming Community Development to Planning and Development Services Division. Into that position, we'll report planning, building, safety and code, and real estate. And then kind of the next plan is to pull housing out of Community Development. I think we're all very well aware of the housing emergency that's been declared, and we really see this as a way as being strategic and moving housing reporting into the city manager's office. In the next couple of weeks, we will be opening the recruitment for the new Planning and Development Services Director position. We will be opening that, it'll be the retitled Community Development Director. So you'll see that on the street, and we'll be in touch as we get closer to kind of interviews, and our plan is to also do a meet and greet as well for this position. So I wanted to give you all an update that we have been thinking about it quite a bit. Michelle has been doing a great job filling in as interim Community Development Director, and we look forward to coming back with an update as we kind of get closer to filling that position. So thank you for the opportunity, and just appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, I am going to move to approval of the minutes of our meeting on February 26th, 2025.
Move to approve the minutes.
Okay, CJ has moved to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
And that was seconded by Christine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved as written. And then we're going to move into general business, and Section A is a regional plan, is the regional plan retreat in the review of the draft agenda for May 2nd, 2025, which is already next week.
I know, we're halfway through 2025. Good afternoon, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Sarah Decter, I'm the Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Manager for the city of Flagstaff. I'm here to do basically a light agenda review, and to get your comments on the agenda for the upcoming retreat on May 2nd from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. I'll sort of make an announcement first about it. We originally scheduled it to be at the Aquaplex. However, as you can tell from this building, and maybe some things happening at the Aquaplex, that building is also under construction, trying to get some work done on improving the exterior, and also the HVAC and electrical systems in the meeting room. So we are going to move that meeting to this location. It will be here in the chamber, in the council conference room that is back through the sliding doors. So ignore the first invite you got that says the Aquaplex. You'll be getting one shortly that tells you you will be coming to City Hall for that day. So please let us know if there's anything we can do to help. And please, when you see any social media about that, please help spread the word that we've had to switch locations. We are nimble as always. So the regional plan, as you'll recall, is for an area around Flagstaff, going out to Fort Valley and Timberline, Fernwood, Donie Park, Mount Air and Kachina Village in Belmont. The nature of it being a joint document means we are pulling everyone who is going to be part of the hearing process together for this joint retreat. But as you can see, Coconino County is a much bigger area geographically, even though two-thirds of all the residents in Coconino County live in the little purple box that we might think of as greater Flagstaff, or the Flagstaff region. And for that purpose, this document is written with two purposes in mind. It is an amendment to the comprehensive plan for Coconino County, and it is a standalone general plan for the city. That means that both those purposes must be met, and all the requirements of them must be clearly met. That is complicated, we're the only city in Arizona that takes on that level of complicated policy integration between two jurisdictions that have some unique challenges. Some of the things we talk about for the city are not viable solutions for maybe the same kind of issue in the county. So this retreat is a chance to reflect on those. What is something we need common language for? What are things we need more distinctive language for so that we capture the right information in the draft plan? A couple updates. Staff, because of the complexity of the document, is really working hard to remain to address the staff comments and the legal comments that we have received in the last few months. We've already incorporated all the public comments into a draft that we are still reviewing internally, and our internal review is really focused on implementability. What is it going to take for this to be a document that really can be easily understood and used? We've had a lot of complex value conversations and issue-based conversations with the community, and during the 60-day review, we received over 2,400 public comments. We've been through all of those, we've incorporated what we can from that. But this is a time where we've slowed down a little, and we are not going to be releasing the full draft, updated draft of the plan ahead of the meeting next week for the retreat. And with that in mind, there are still several really important topics. One of the reasons is I need feedback on those topics before I can finalize the work we've done. So we're actually going to be taking pieces out of the draft plan, getting some higher-level feedback, and then we will discuss what might be the next milestones at the retreat. So you received a retreat agenda with your packet with four work sessions, and I'll go over those a little and ask for your feedback on them as well. So really, the goal today is, if there are things that are not on the agenda for the retreat, and you want them on there, you want to know where they will be covered, this is the time to ask. Or if it's something that maybe we can't fit in as a new topic because we have 29 people in limited time, we might need to figure out how to schedule work sessions or other things to make sure those questions might be addressed. So that kind of feedback will help me kind of plan what we look for in milestones. I'd like to have at the retreat an updated list of milestones, and when we'll be starting public hearings for you, roughly sketched out. But this slowdown, which is being done to be conscientious, now means that we will schedule the ballot initiative for May 2026. So that, originally we were hoping for March. Ballot initiatives have to be called almost six months in advance, which is a really slow adoption process. It will take us almost three months to get through all the steps at Planning and Zoning Commission and Council, and then we have to wait another six months before voters get to vote on it. So that's just the challenge we have with the way the legislation is written for plan adoption. And as I stated, we'll be having the meeting now here instead of at the Aquaplex. The County Board of Supervisors, the City Council, and the County Planning and Zoning Commission have already had this presentation roughly from me and from Melissa Shaw, my counterpart at Coconino County. They had questions for us about facilitation. So they're 29 people, most of us will be in person. We highly encourage in-person attendance. It will be very difficult to participate remotely, but some people have to take that challenge on because we all have very busy schedules. We'll have two professional, non-staff, in-person facilitators. So Alex Steinberger and Sachi, from our, sorry, I forgot his name, Sachi Arkawa from Cascadia Partners will be here in person, and Ally Pratt will be the online facilitator. So Cascadia is going to take the exercises that we're planning to do here in person, and also make them available online, but you're not going to get the interaction online that you would get if we were here in the room getting to do breakout groups and other conversations. So that's maybe the next part is, we're not all just going to be sitting around the table the whole time, we're going to be up and moving around the room. There will be breakout group conversations, there will be Post-its on the wall. It's going to be a very interactive day. And the reason we're going to do that in an open meeting format is we will be having an activity given to everyone attending. Attending, you will get a chance to go do that activity with a small group, and then the small groups will come back and report out so that it's on the minutes what we actually did during that time. We also are going to have staff here to answer questions to the extent that we can, and then hopefully capture the conversation through notes and other things that we can incorporate. The other issue they wanted clarity on was having some clarity in the information on things we're wording to be appropriate for the city and county versus things for just the city or county. And that is something we have worked to do in the plan. And then lastly, they asked for making sure when we talk about the Future Growth Illustration that we include some examples for those conversations so that we're kind of treating that time reviewing the map more like a sandbox time than a pre-formal presentation. So the retreat is, we're going to gather here at 8:45 to 9:00 so that we can sit down right at 9:00 o'clock. We'll have introductions because there's a lot of people, and we don't believe everyone knows each other, but it's a good chance to meet your fellow commissioners from the county. And we will also be having some expectation-setting discussions about what people hope to get out of the retreat, about what they want the plan to accomplish, about what our expectations are moving forward. We'll give you a short process overview of what we're doing during the day and what we've done to get to this point, and other related information you're going to need for all the work sessions. And then we will have four work sessions. One before lunch, and then the rest will sort of be part of the afternoon. The plan reorganization will cover just really how the documents shaping up organizationally. It's not going to be a full document review. You're going to get a table of contents and the priorities and goals, but not all the information in between. And then you'll also go over something we discussed at the Regional Plan Committee meeting on March 6th, which is discussing the getting rid of implementation guidelines in each chapter, which is something the committee endorsed as a step moving forward, with an explanation of how that is shaping up as well. Because we're kind of into the middle of doing that revision work. The afternoon work session will be the longest, it'll be two full hours. It'll be come and go if you need to, I'm sure that's too long not to have a break. Going over the Future Growth Illustration. I imagine we're going to have breakout tables, and be working over paper maps, and having conversations about the different categories and what those mean. The other two sessions will be on trail maps. There's a lot of questions that we've received about the maps we're using for trails. The statute says we should show walking and bicycling paths. It doesn't call them trails, but we have our Flagstaff Urban Trail System. We have a regional trail system identified through the Regional Trails Plan, and a lot of different interests in figuring out how we're going to move forward with trail planning. And then at the same time, we have property owners who are worried that showing the lines we have been showing on the maps is leading to trespass issues on larger parcels, and maybe issues of, you know, what would you say, people cutting fences because they go, I saw that there should be a trail here, I'm going to go check it out. So people are curious by nature, and that's something that we've heard from property owners who have larger properties and who've been experiencing those issues. So we're going to talk through that a little bit as well. And then the fourth one is a topic that the plan was pretty silent on in the 60-day review draft, but we worked up a first draft of how we think we could address it. We had lots of comments where people said we really needed to address community character. I called the 60-day public review draft "architecturally agnostic" because it really tried to stay away from defining what's good architecture. It was kind of one of the first questions I actually asked when I got here, and I was handed kind of the 2030 plan, was they said, okay, we're going to have outstanding suburban design. And I was like, well, what is good suburban design? You didn't define it for me anywhere. I guess I was supposed to know it when I see it, which is not a great standard for an architect to work from. So we struggled with that a lot, we pulled way back, but we're creating some different kinds of materials to capture. We're not calling it community character, we're calling it creating a sense of place. So how are we doing what the current plan calls placemaking? Where we are thinking about not just having a box that holds our use, but an architecture and design that actually creates places. Lastly, after the last work session, we're going to wrap up what we heard and discuss if there's other follow-ups that are needed. That could be very important, there might be work sessions or e-sessions that we decide we need to have between now and the first public hearings. And so we've got to start planning those out. And then there'll also be Sachi and Steiny, who is our, Alex Steinberger, our other facilitator, will help kind of capture some group reflections for the day so that we're working forward. We can adjourn at 5:00 p.m. or earlier, just for the sake of reminding everyone they can be brief with their comments. And so that's our goal, there is a little time in there. Probably the other thing to know is that each of the work sessions will have a public comment period. That's sort of, you know, the wild card in every city agenda, right? Is that will 10 people show up and want to talk at all four? Or will, you know, just a few people want to get up at all four? If it follows the Regional Plan Committee format that we had, we really only had two or three people who wanted to talk at a time. It's a long day, too. Somebody would either have to come to talk about the specific issue, or they would, at the certain time, which we will publish times for them, or they would have to come sit through the day. So I'm not expecting we'll have an enormous amount of public comment, but I do expect a few people have told me like, yeah, I'm spending the day there, and I'll be listening in, or what time can I log in? So I think we will have, you know, 10 to 20 people from the public who may not all want to speak, but at least want to sit and listen, and may, you know, want to interact. The one thing I would say is, you know, remember the rules of the road in your board and commission's manual of, you know, what's appropriate to discuss in the downtime if members of the public are there in this long day and we're touching base with them. So I'm sure Stacy would appreciate us all to just freshen yourself up on it a little because it's an unusual format, and there's probably going to be more mingling during the breaks. So the questions I have for you are, is there anything you wish was on this agenda that you don't see? Is there anything you think you want to know about ahead of time? This is definitely your chance to quiz me if you've got questions, or things you think you just want to get it off your chest and know what the answer is so you don't have to bring it up at the retreat. Happy to do those now. And then I'm happy to answer any logistical questions, including where are we ordering lunch from? No, not yet, so I'm taking suggestions as well on where to order lunch.
Mary has a question, so I'll go to Mary.
I always have questions, but I'll start us off. I think my concern is, so you're saying staff and legal comments have been incorporated into the rewrite that is not published, as well as a general consensus of public comments?
All that we have incorporated so far in the draft that I have and am working on is the general public comments. We've not been able to get through all the staff technical comments and the legal comments. They're just more complicated. If we were just doing this as a single jurisdiction, this would be a way simpler process. But it is complicated that we have to cross-reference city-specific plans, county-area plans, the county comprehensive plan, the city zoning code, the county zoning code, and then the state statute Title IX and Title XI for the city and county. It's just a more complicated review, and we've needed more time with it.
So how can we best prepare, I guess? I mean, has there been a lot of changes to the regional plan that was put out for the 60-day comment period? I mean, or is that sort of now old news? I mean, where do you want our preparation work to be done?
This will not be a blank slate. On Monday, we will be sending out a packet, just like you would for a normal meeting that will go through Agenda Quick, and be all online, and approved, and available for everybody to look at. So we're getting those inputted now and sending them through routing over the next few days.
So since I went to the open house last week that you held, and you talked a little bit about how some of the reorganization of the plan itself is being done, and taking out those implementation guidelines and things like that. Are you looking for, from this retreat, for input on the plan organization? Or the content of the plan, or both?
It's going to be a little bit of both. You're not going to get the policy-level details, but like, big question is, have we set the right priorities? We have six priorities that we've updated since the 60-day review draft, based on the input we got from the community. Some about plan organization, and how they wanted to see the connections look a little stronger, and then others just about what should be prioritized. and then others just about what should be prioritized. But if those are wrong, I have a lot of work to do. If we have to reorganize, make a major reorganization, or we want to drop a priority or reword it significantly, or maybe organize it differently, that won't be like a small lift at this point. And so I that's there are some things, the things we're going to ask you to check in on are things that these may seem small from a strategic standpoint, but the actual work to change them, if there if people, you know, and people should be very honest, like, I hate this or this really worries me or what if. Then we will need to take a big step back and redo some of that work. So like it has a big impact on the timeline if we're not very frank about what we think the reorganization might look like, but you should be getting that Monday. So and it won't be as big a packet as if you got the whole document. It'll be significantly smaller and much of the packet I sent you about four to six weeks ago in that email where I said, hey, everybody, here's part one. This is all ready for you to see. So don't forget to that you looked at that. I'm sure you all looked at it, right?
I was wondering like.
So you can spend your weekend, sorry.
So like if this is, I mean, you're in essence allowing comments from the very foundational start of the plan is what you're telling me in a sense, allowing that kind of critique, I guess.
Yes, but I mean, it's going to be in a room where there's twenty-nine other people. We're going to use a lot of facilitation tools. Like so you'll be doing it through dot exercises and through, like I have, I should have brought one in. I have like a little packet of red, yellow and green things. So the facilitator might say like, okay, who is who can't live with this? And you'd hold up a red card and people would talk about why there's a red card in the room and what that means. And do we want to change strategy because we're worried that there will be issues with getting this material through for whatever reason? So I mean, I think it's a real like gut check hard before we go to public hearings because once council approves this, once you've had your hearings and you'll have three really, you have a citizen review session, you have two public hearings. So you'll hear this at a hearing level over three meetings. Then it goes to council and once the council votes on it, we can make very few changes before it goes on a ballot. The time to make those changes is not at hearing. It is well ahead.
And my last thing is, is there some kind of synopsis? And then maybe this happened earlier on and I have forgotten, but is there some kind of a synopsis of like in the regional twenty thirty plan, when it was written fifteen years ago or probably ten years ago at this point? How did that end up serving us? How did that plan and those the vision for that plan look as to where we are right now? Were we on base? Were we on target? What were we missing? What did we not get to have influence over? What didn't turn out the way we hoped it to turn out, things like that? Is there some review of that?
We did that in very early in the process, if you remember. And you may not, some of the commissioners may not have been there. We did a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threat assessment. And that is on the project website. So you can go review that and it breaks out by commission, what the concerns were that were raised. I mean, really, one of the biggest things the current plan had in terms of his problem is it had no priorities. It moved none of the metrics it said it was going to move. So it from a performance metric level, it did very poorly. In fact, more metrics moved in a negative direction from the stated goals than actually moved in the right direction. So I mean, it was not a well-performing plan, even though it had all the right words. People really liked the content of that plan. And it was a big part of the early outreach during phase one, back to my phases. Oh, that was too fast. But in phase one, when we were doing the analyze phase, we talked about that a lot. We said, I can't show you a single annual report where we improved on a metric except for a number of people getting on planes at the airport. I mean, that's not a great regional plan. That's not serving us as a community very well. So I called that the mom and apple pie problem is it tried to be mom and apple pie and then was just not effective. And that's also why we're taking more time with the implementation review is because last time around, it was there were some some project management things that happened. So there were three planners over the course of the project who was in who were in charge of it. There was not a stable staff like me and Alex and Tiffany and Michelle have all been here the whole time. We had very stable leadership of this process. They did not during the last update. And so the person who got it was already in year three and they gave her two years to clean it up and get it done. So there were a lot of steps where she was just like, I just didn't have time. That sounded like a great idea or I knew that could be an issue, but I just couldn't do it because her timeframe had gotten so tight. The project was out of money. It was out of time. It had to move. So I think that rush at the end is part of why some of those things of testing it and making sure it actually did what it said it would do couldn't get worked out at that time. And so we spent several years amending it. Like I pretty much showed up with a plan amendment the next year and was like, whoops, we didn't meet legal review requirements. So I mean, I I think plans are living documents and we should expect to amend the plan twenty times over the course of ten years, probably at a minimum. If we're not doing that, we're really not using it. It's just sitting on a shelf. But we there were lots of unexpected things that happened as there isn't any ten-year period of time. But we also just didn't have a plan that made decisions easily. It made decisions very complicated. It's hard not to make it's hard to make these long-term land use decisions completely uncomplicated. But we're making an effort to do that with what we're doing in the plan now. So getting the idea of like, do we have the right organization? Do we have the right land use categories? Are we concerned about, you know, something in the sense of place group of topics that's just not covered and we're like, we really can't live or go forward without this kind of material? And then have a conversation about the trade-offs, right? We're in a housing emergency as a city. We have a climate emergency. How are we? How are we incorporating those things? Has been a question we've been asking very thoroughly, both through the last cap and the regional plan update. So those are really different things than the last time around.
I think that would be my only comment is, you know, to give us all a real sense of purpose in this work is to like, how can we make this regional plan better than the last one and more functional? Because like when I look at the old one and I look at maps and things, I think, well, that doesn't look anything like what we've ended up with today.
Oh, yeah, it's not.
Yeah. And so it's like, you know, there were activity centers all over the place. And, you know, whether that's an internal thing or whether that's just the nature of the way development comes to us. But all of those, you know, I think that gives us a strong sense of purpose of why we're doing this. And if there was some extra weight added to that, I think that would help.
Yeah. And I certainly encourage you, if you can go under the public participation tab, you can find the SWOT analysis. And it is, it would be very, I hadn't sent that out with the packet, but it would be a useful thing to look at if that's a baseline you need. I think that's probably the best document to go back and and do some pre-work on. You guys have seen my websites. I keep them really up to date and thorough.
So two things that I wanted to ask for, you said, so I'm just thinking about my office and what a mess it is right now. And you said, go to your, you know, booklet and look up what you can say. Can anybody copy that and send it to us in an email? Our packet, what we can say to the public in these?
Oh, from the board and commission manual?
Yes.
Sure, we could resend the pages. Well, we'll send you the link to the board and commission manuals.
Okay.
And point out a portion of it.
And then can you resend the plan that you sent us a month ago? Because I would have a little trouble finding that in my email.
Okay, I'll refresh those to the top of your list.
Yes, thank you. That way I'll find those.
Yeah.
I wanted to see, Josh, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. So Sarah, thank you for your presentation. My my question is, and I know you've probably answered this question earlier on in the process, but I'm sort of coming to this towards the tail end in my capacity as a commissioner. Could you talk a little bit about the the strategy to partner with the county on on this effort? It seems from this perspective that it's added a another layer of complexity that maybe doesn't serve either party well. So could you speak to that?
Yeah. So the city and county have done a joint regional plan since two thousand and one. So this is the third iteration of that. The real, you know, we talked about this at the Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday. The real motivation for that, for the council and the Board of Supervisors is to create a shared vision for this very economically tied region. The other reason the county invests in this process with us is they do not have a land use plan in their comprehensive plan. Their comprehensive plan is just goals and policies. So they don't do the scenario planning and the mapping work outside of this region. And so that map becomes very important because it's their basis for all of their neighborhood, their community plans, their area plans, like for Doni Park in Belmont in the last few years. And it creates a unified set of land uses. One of the benefits of that for the city certainly is that when we're doing annexations, we have the same future growth category for the city and counties. That can be a little more difficult in other jurisdictions where people say, oh, my future growth category in the county is this, but it's something different if the city were going to annex me. And so we have a more unified vision of that as well. It does make writing some of the policies a little more difficult because we have to keep in mind something that may sound a little off for the city might also be written that way so that the county can have has scenarios where they might be applying it differently. So it is a bit of a challenge to kind of tweak all the wording so that it meets both sets of needs all the time. And we have to have two legal reviews and et cetera, two adoption processes. It does make it more complex. Yeah, and it does. It does make it more expensive. But council and the Board of Supervisors were well advised of that early on and were given the option to not go down the joint path, to have a joint analysis process, but produce two documents. And they still elected to stay with this joint planning document and as an output.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions, Josh? Do you have any other questions?
None for me. Thank you.
C J?
So I had a question about the ballot initiative. Do you know what percentage it has to pass by? And based on our history of ballot initiatives that had a PR component that came out and then derailed stuff? Not in, I'm talking about the hospitals, what I'm thinking of. So I mean, what happens if it doesn't pass?
So well, let me say two things. One, we always do the regional plan as a standalone ballot initiative. So it is a mail-in ballot initiative. There's no poll in-person polling. You get it in the mail and you mail in your ballot. That's how we run that election. And it's how we've done it the last few times. If it doesn't pass, we just keep working with our current plan and we have to go back and reassess. And, you know, we would probably end up doing like, you know, poll level surveys and saying, well, why didn't you vote for it? And what do we need to change? And then making adjustments. The percent, the to pass city council, this is a super majority vote. So we do have to have a super majority of council vote to put it on the ballot, but the ballot itself is just a straight fifty percent. Our last regional plan passed with seventy-eight percent of the vote. And there's really only one or two cities in Arizona that have really had trouble passing their ballots. Yeah, Scottsdale. Yeah. We feel the pain of that, but we have not had to do it twice. And we did, we do try and run like a very robust public engagement, stay involved very often, you know, get a lot of people to do feedback. It's still only a percentage, like if maybe, let's say, a thousand to twelve hundred people have participated in the last few years, that would be a lot of people. It's still only a fraction of the eighty thousand people that live in the region. But it's a really nerdy, complex topic is how I describe it. So I mean, that's the point of the retreat is we're going to we're going to nerd together, like in a really fun policy way. But it but there's just, it's hard to get people's heads around it. People did provide a lot of comments. We actually also still have a survey open that's tied to the sense of place material that we will be in the future growth illustration that we close tomorrow or not tomorrow, Friday. So Friday, we will close that and attach it to the packet and you'll get to see what the feedback on that particular survey is. And it was a survey we designed based on some of the feedback from the sixty-day public review that said, we don't think people are really weighing in on this very carefully or that they don't understand it. So we were trying to take the complexity of the document and break it out into more of a survey so we could get that feeling back of what people wanted. It's we're not, the last time I looked at the results yesterday, we're not that far off. Like there are probably some adjustments to make from the survey, but it's not like it doesn't tell me to take a big swing. It tells me there's some things we could tweak.
Okay. Okay, Christine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of of questions. What about the amendment process? Is that fairly straightforward? Or are we going to discuss any of that? Because that obviously can create issues with, you know, people not proceeding forward with projects. And, you know, we've got this housing issue and if you, you know, as time goes on, a project comes by, doesn't meet, you know, and then you look at the general plan and that's another hurdle if you have to go through an amendment process.
So the, yeah, so Coconino County does not use the amendment process that we write into the plan. They use the amendment process from their comprehensive plan, no matter what we put in this plan. So we do have a chapter where we discuss, like here are our major and minor plan amendment categories. And here are the, we actually this time have, as we went over in the sixty-day public review, we have administrative categories for the first time. So the current plan, if I needed to change a web address, I had to go through a minor amendment. So I just didn't update those things for years and years. And last time around, one of the 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 mayor actually at the time was like, why didn't we create this as a highly hyperlinked document where people could really navigate it more like a website than just a document? And I couldn't do that without an administrative process. So one of the things that will go that will go forward in this with no changes from the sixty-day review is just that there'll be an administrative process. The only real change that we are, we're not going to talk about at the retreat because it's not a joint issue. It's a city-only issue is that we received a lot of comments about changing the category for zoning. I'm sorry, the category for amendment category for the urban growth boundary changes. And we will revise that. So but the rest of the process, like how do you do it? How many hearings? Where do they have to be? That is actually all in Title Eleven. It is a very good question and Tiffany Antall and I, our zoning code manager, talked about it today about should we start getting Title Eleven code updates ready so they are on the next council agenda after the ballot initiative? And that might be something we're working on that could include some procedural updates, some language updates to make the plan, sure the plan language and the code language matches. It might include some recommendations from the last cap for streamlining the process. And it might also include even some amendments to like how we word our findings. So that's all stuff we're going to need to work on, but it's not in the plan, if that makes sense. There's parts of it that are in the plan and parts of it are in the code.
But as I understand from the statutes, you have to have an amendment process written in the document, correct?
You have to identify your categories of amendments. The the process goes into your code.
Okay, because, you know, when you look at how different cities, you know, and I've been here, God, for forty-five years and I've worked on tons of these things. And then when you're on the other side of the fence and you're trying to do a project like City of Phoenix, it's very broad how you can go through an amendment process. Some of these others, it's like a zoning case. You've got to go through all these different hearings. And now when we're faced with some of this housing crisis, that isn't going to help. So that's why I think that's one of the crux of how do we make this, you know, more streamlined? And back to a couple of the other points, when you go through these processes, most of the general public, you know, in my experience, and I did work for one city that the general plan didn't get approved for like fifteen years. I don't even know if it's still approved, Scottsdale. And then later I worked for Queen Creek and we won an APA award because it was very short, it was very succinct. And we, you know, the woman, the woman that really ran it, she did a great job. But then also the public outreach, they were monitoring, you know, the next door. They were every single thing that would come up. come up. Because once people grab onto things and they don't understand it, a lot of them thinks this is a zoning ordinance. They're looking at, well, what does this color mean? What does this land use mean? And unless some things change, general plans are guides, correct? A guide, correct?
Well, they are, but they do intersect with our zoning findings. Like, we do have a, the number one finding for zonings is that it's inconformant. So how do we determine conformance? The city and county, the, the weird thing about doing a joint plan is that the city and county will do it differently. The county will have its own procedures and methods and language it's comparing conformance for than the city will. That's why that's not really going to be heavily covered in the retreat because we will have separate procedures. It's the same, actually the same with, like, calculating density. The city code and the county code do not calculate the density of a project the same way. And yet we have to have density ranges that we can use in both cases. So that's, those are very big challenges of doing a joint document. And that's part of why the calibration can be really important and why we don't put all of those details in the plan. We definitely put enough that people can understand, here's what we're doing, here's how we make decisions with this document. But then, like, how many public hearings do you have to have? Who do you notice when there's a major or minor amendment? What's the timing of that? That's all covered in Title 11 of the city code. So we're not making any changes till Title 11 until the plan is adopted. We can prepare them. We can start the hearings for them in, you know, April of 2026, but we, we want to make sure the plan's actually adopted before we move them forward for final hearings.
Okay, great. You guys have done a great job, you know, taking on two jurisdictions. That's, you have my sympathies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Are there any other comments or questions from anyone else? I just, so if this is adopted in the city, there's amendments to the city, does the county also have to adopt those amendments?
Such a good question. So the 60-day public review did have an answer to that because that happened in the last 10 years. Belmont, we did a bunch of amendments in the city and the county did a big one out in Belmont. And we had no way to update our plant, our map unless we went through the amendment process again. There, one of the administrative categories we're going to be proposing is that if the county goes through hearings and adoption of an amendment, and we want to make that on our map, we can just do it as an administrative change. And we probably will unless there's some reason it's controversial or we don't want to. But we're not going to go through double public hearings. We don't have any jurisdiction over that property. And so if somebody wants to change it from suburban neighborhood to open space, that's really the county's business and it would help us if the maps can match.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. That's another reason that the, if I may, that the Future Growth Illustration is such a focus of the retreat is we don't, one thing I really, like, there might be some changes between what the city adopts and the county adopts. Hopefully not many. We've really worked hard to make sure that's not the case. But we really don't want to have them adopt a different map. That's critical into making sure we are really all on the same page about where the land use categories are and what they mean.
Thank you. CJ?
So the only other thing that I'm really, really interested in is the transportation portion of it. And in particular, the transportation from Williams into Flagstaff, which may be beyond the scope of this, but I feel like we have enough data from the cell phones to know that we have all these commuters coming in. And so that's, that's all I, I just, even if it's put on a bulletin board for later or a, you know, if it's not going to be addressed now, but I just think it's an, an upcoming issue that's going to continue to grow.
Um, I, the, the, we did receive comments about transit to outlying areas and commuter transit options. I mean, really, the, the thrust of the plan is that we want to turn the tide on people moving out of the community and just staying employed here. We want to be able to house our workforce and we want to take, what the scenario planning showed us was that if we are aggressive and we really are very serious about that as a goal, we could reduce that impact. It is not actually inevitable, but it will be inevitable in 10 years. 10 years from now will be too late, but the opportunity still exists for us to pull people who maybe, you know, maybe they've not bought a house in Williams, but who've kind of been excluded from our rental market or who are looking for more options in the community to come in. But we have to be really flexible. We have to, we have to actually do more than what our housing goals state right now. So there's, but it's not impossible, but only if we're very serious about it and we move in that direction as quickly as we can. And we're kind of starting. If you saw the housing update last night at city council, they showed that on some of their kind of metrics that they have graphically represented that the, it's filling up. It's a, you know, we're a third of the way to 2030 when their goals are for, and we're getting almost 25% to a third of the way on some of the goals. So we've got to start really taking that very seriously and we have for the last few years. It's just going to take a sustained effort for a decade or more to really achieve it. So we don't really focus on like, let's, let's solve that problem by providing transit. The solution in the plan is let's solve that problem by providing housing where we already have transit. And truthfully, Mountain Line says that's more cost-effective for them, too. They're not even sure they will have funding for things beyond the permanent transit network. If FTA funding is cut, that's real in the next few years. So long-distance commuting by transit might not be financially feasible.
So given that, that the federal government is pulling funding from a lot of things, how does the plan prepare for that?
I'm really glad you asked that question, Chairman Dino. We were preparing for that with the beginning of scenario planning. If you, if you came to the workshop, I know Mary did, I'm not sure who else came from the group that we had in March of two years ago, I think. We actually created scenarios where there's no funding for infrastructure, but high population growth or demand. And we actually think the scenario we have is the most robust in both of those scenarios. It's very robust when we have low funding scenarios and it was very robust and performed well when we had high funding scenarios. So that's why the Future Growth Illustration looks the way it does is because that's the scenario that gets us the most resilient future in that case. The one that gets us the furthest away and the least resilient in that case is the one where we keep doing what we've been doing. No surprise, we called it business as usual. And really, business as usual is pretty bad for Flagstaff. Transit to Williams would be the least of our worries.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. I want to thank you very much for your presentation and all your answers to our questions. Great job putting this together. You're going to have a big job in the next week, so. And we're all going to have a big job next week as well. Yes. Lots of reading for us. Oh. Do we have a suggestion for lunch? Anybody? Anybody have any dietary concerns?
Yeah. If you have dietary concerns, please email me. Let me know. I'll try and get some vegetarian and dairy-free options. Those are usually the most common, so.
Or?
Yeah. There's a couple.
Or gluten-free things.
Yeah. Nobody's going to be set if it's like a Subway kind of, not Subway, but like a sandwich kind of situation, sandwich and salads. Okay.
Man, I want a gourmet dinner.
Yeah. My budget's not that big.
Yeah, exactly. Just make sure you have enough diet drinks.
Okay. I'm good to know.
That always runs out at any place I'm ever at. They always underestimate people who drink diet drinks rather than sugary drinks.
It's true. But do you have a preference?
Me? Diet drinks.
Just Dr. Pepper or Coke? Because if I'm going to go buy a pack of diet, I can go buy whatever. I'm not kidding.
Diet Dr. Pepper, you just had me, so.
Okay. All right. That's, no, it's good to know. I don't want to run out of beverages or water or snack.
Yeah.
It'll be a long day. We should stay fueled up.
And if you have iced tea, if you have lemon, fresh lemon for the iced tea.
Yeah. I'll try and have some coffee in the morning, too. I'll get like, I'll get a couple of coffee crafts brought over, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm, I'm not a coffee drinker, but that's okay. I have other things to drink. Can we bring our own? Like, I can bring my own chai tea.
Totally.
Okay.
It says on the door, don't bring food and drink in here, but it doesn't mean you guys.
I bring drink all the time. Okay. Anything else? I forgot. Ian or, or Josh, do you have any dietary concerns?
I won't be able to make it, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you. Miscellaneous items to and from commission members? Hearing none. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 4:54 PM. Thank you.